I'd like to call to order the January 9, 2018 Bristol, Virginia City Council meeting. With that said, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, real quick, I hope everyone had a good holiday. It's time to get back to city business. We've got a long agenda tonight. Weather's cooperating, so we'll get started. And City Manager, if you have any comments at this time?
Real quick, I don't know if you all know yet, but Washington County's E-911 system has gone down. We are covering the 911 system for Washington County at the moment. Mr. Berry with Washington County contacted me, and we're more than happy to help out when needed, and our staff seems to be handling that at the moment. I think that will be up and running in Washington County shortly. I want to say that over the holidays, I know that there was several staff members who were working on our refinancing our debt, and they worked diligently to get it done. Everything is moving as it should, and Council will see tonight the audit and the resolution that we'll be presenting for to refinance some of that debt. And just one last thing, I think things overall are moving in the right direction for the city of Bristol right now. We are doing exactly what we need to do to move this city forward, and I look forward to an exciting 2018.
All right, any other comments from City Council?
Just one thing, Mr. City Manager, I hope that this is being taken care of. City Hall, where the court systems are located, the clerk's offices and so forth are just as important in cleanliness as they are right here at City Hall. And, you know, the worst thing can ever happen is a customer, someone who's paying a ticket, I know you've gone and paid tickets, turned in timesheets yourself, the worst thing can ever happen is instead of seeing one of the nice ladies, it's a clerk, come and ask to help them, a wharf rat shows up because the building at the City Hall isn't clean. Now, I may be exaggerating that, but I've seen it. I've been walked in and looked at the trash piled up and piled up and piled up. That's not healthy. It causes vermin, it causes disease, and so forth and so on. If this city is that cash-strapped, then we need to know, but otherwise, we have a lot of good people that work down here at the courts. And for trash to be piled up on end in trashcans is ludicrous, it's ridiculous, it's disconcerting, quite frankly. And if anything happens to someone because of disease caused by not doing the right job down at the courts, the offices of the courts, then somebody's going to be answerable to that. And I'm saying if you saw it with your own eyes, it would be repulsive to you as it was to me.
Now that I'm on notice, that will be corrected.
Thank you.
I'll send an email right now.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Council? All right, with that said, we want to see if there's any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to, I think you said it would be moved up to number three in the agenda, executive session, is that correct, Mr. City Manager? We've agreed to move up to the executive session number three?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, motion to move executive session number three. Any other changes?
Second.
Second? Please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes. All right, with that, we're on to the regular agenda items. I don't have the sign-up sheet, so someone bring the sign-up sheet up, please. First item, presentation of the city of Bristol, Virginia financial aid, or financial audit for the year ending June 30, 2017.
Mayor and members of Council, Gordon Jones and Corbin Stone from Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates, auditors for the city of Bristol, will present the audited financial statement data for the year ended June 30, 2017.
Ms. Bradlin? Appreciate it. Good evening, members of Council, mayor. My name is Gordon Jones, and I'm the partner in charge of the audit. Corbin Stone is with me, my business partner and the concurring partner on the city's audit. We've got a handout that continues our presentation.
Is the microphone on? I'm sorry, is the microphone, can you speak?
Is that better? Sorry. We've got a presentation that you should have. Everybody have that, Mr. Fleener. Councilman Fleener, do you have it?
I have it, and I also know that there was, I had, I received it this afternoon, about 12-something, but I have court and so forth and so on today, and had to visit the regional jail. And then I understood there was a meeting acknowledged today for 5:15. With all respect, sir, even if I'd come at 5:15 and reviewed this from 12-something, assuming I got it from my account from the city, there is no way that I would be able to discourage this enough to actually ask you all any kind of significant questions. I don't know who could. If anybody up here is able to do that, then they're a financial wizard. But make sure I understand, and I'm going to ask you both this question, so the public isn't confused. This is not a forensic audit, nor this is a legal audit of anything going back to any project in the city prior to, this is just a snapshot of 2016 to 2017 fiscal, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
That's all I want to know, okay.
That's correct.
The other thing I'll mention is I just gave Cameron my business card, so actually, we don't expect you to get through a 128-page audit report in an afternoon, or a day, or even a couple of days. So as you have questions, she's going to pass around my business card, you guys can call us, email me, whatever you need to do to get in touch with me. We're there to help you guys. We work for Council, so just don't hesitate to call us or email us with questions.
And it can be next week and so forth, after we get some good reading this weekend, when, you know, we get out of the dentist's chair and so forth Friday, we can read this while we're recuperating, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I'm over on page 13 of the handout. We're going to get into some of the numbers now. This first analysis is an equity analysis, it's on page, Mr., on page 13. An equity analysis, the numbers at the top are the condensed statement of net position. It's a full accrual numbers, it's a long-term perspective, so it includes all of your capital assets, it includes all of your long-term debts. You can see that you have total assets of about $118 million. You have $4 million in deferred outflows, mostly related to pensions. You have total liabilities of about $108, $109 million. Deferred inflows of about 10.6, and your net position's about $3.4, $3.5 million. You can see that what kind of an impact Gatsby 68 has had on those financial statements over the past four years, Gatsby 68, and then a couple, last year you also wrote off the advance from the solid waste department. So that decreased your net position from about $53 million down to about $3.5 million.
Question for you at that point, I'm going to make sure I'm right, you said our assets in the city of Bristol, Virginia are $118 million?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct, sir? I didn't hear that wrong. And we have, I didn't hear that wrong.
That's correct.
And the liabilities of 108 to 109?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Is it 108 or is it 109?
108, 717, 418.
So it's closer to 109. Percentage of the debt to asset ratio. If we have assets of $118 million and a debt of almost $109 million, what is that asset? I mean, what is the ratio of debt to assets?
Your debt-to-equity ratio is about 31%, which is a pretty high number.
Okay, I don't think I really, I think, we can only borrow as a city 90% of our assets, if I'm not correct, if I'm, or, 10?
10% of the appraised value.
Are we over that, or with this?
You're at 95% of, you can borrow up to 10% of your real estate assessments, or assessed value. You're at 95% of what you can borrow.
95%. Is that with the refi, or is that prior to the refi?
If you're refinancing us today, then it's prior to the refi.
So we've got a 5% cushion, is that essentially right?
We've got about a 5% cushion. And it's probably not enough, not nearly enough, yeah.
Some of these obligations that are shown here, long-term debts, are not interest-bearing debts.
Right, so some of those obligations, your pension liabilities included in those were.
Okay, that's an interesting question. Pension liabilities, unfunded pension liabilities are somewhere in the neighborhood of $20 million for the city of Bristol, Virginia. Now, that's not factored into the $108 million, is it?
That is factored into the $108.
That is factored in.
It is factored in.
Yes, sir.
You're just looking at governmental activities here. This does not include business-type activities, so.
Solid waste fund, it does not include a solid waste fund. And we'll go into.
Does not include solid waste?
We'll get into the debt in just a few minutes.
Those are treated differently, so you have this set of books for your governmental activities, and then for enterprise-type activity, they're separate.
The main thing that I want to point out on the numbers at the top is that your total net position for the city is about $3.5 million, but you have negative $12.3 million in unrestricted net position. And that's because you have a net pension liability of about $20 million, mostly because of that.
Theoretically, we take assets and then depreciate them over time. Theoretically, when you look at the equity analysis, we're saying here, if you were to close up shop today, what would you wind up with? If you sold off everything you own and paid off all your debts? In an accounting sense, theoretically, this is the best number we can come up with without doing an appraisal of all your assets and that sort of thing. So that lets you know where you are.
So we could, so in essence, you just basically took a figure of $118 million, and actually, that figure could be substantially lower than $118 million. I mean, realistically, it could be $100 million.
Yeah.
Because who's going to buy a City Hall?
They're tough to sell. That's correct.
So we're actually over without?
No.
Well, of course not. Realistically, if we assess property at fair market value, or actually at discounted rates for some properties, because nobody buys City Halls, then we actually are over our debt borrowing limit, are we not?
No, it's the.
How do you know that, Mr. Hubbard? You keep saying no, but I mean.
We're allowed to borrow up to 10% of appraised values of our property, and right now it's over a billion dollars, so 10% of that.
It's all property in the city. It's not just property you own.
I understand.
Yeah, so it's the.
So you're taking real estate that I own, and you're valuing it now?
Exactly, you can borrow, yes, yes, correct. But it's a good question, but it's.
Well, realistically, I'd love to have what I'd like to have for my property. I'd retire tomorrow. But that doesn't happen, does it? It's living in a fantasy, realistically, we're talking about living in a fantasy world here, don't we?
Well, let us kind of finish walking you through this.
We're in Bristol-land.
Let us finish walking, kind of walking you through this. But, yeah, I mean, down at the bottom, you see the condensed balance sheets for your governmental funds, and what that shows is a short-term perspective. In other words, take off all your debt, take off all your capital assets, this building, that sort of thing, and it shows your fund balance, which is kind of a short-term look at how you're doing. Total fund balance at the end of the year was $12.8 million. Then when we lock on all your debts, your pension liabilities, we bring in all your capital assets, that number drops to $3.5 million in overall net equity, if you will. And when you look at what's invested in capital assets versus what's unrestricted, you can see your unrestricted balance is $12.3 million. Basically, what I'm trying to tell you is, if we're going down the road, we're in a car. This fund balance is the dash. You're not overheating, your oil temperature's all right, you've got oil pressure, but we look out down the road, we've got a lot of debt that we've got to take care of, a lot. We're not going to be able to fix that road in one year, two years. It's a long-term plan, okay? Short-term, you're alive, you're breathing. Long-term, you've got some real issues to deal with. That's where we are, bottom line. I probably just gave all of Gordon's presentation away. But this top part is looking down the road, the bottom part, when you look at fund balance, when you look at unassigned fund balance at the end of the year of $8.3 million, that's looking at your dash of your car. Yeah.
I tell you what, you can't be more honest, and I think they were, you were recommended by Ms. Bradlin, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, they obviously are the most honest, two of the most honest gentlemen I've ever had come up here since I've been here, which is too long for me. But, you know, I would like, before you continue on, I mean, realistically, you've given us a snapshot, you've given us this audit, which is just, as you said, your assessments based on your all's opinions and so forth, without any kind of actual data to support that, other than what you're assuming it to be. I mean, that's a fair statement. I would prefer, if we, rather than continuing the presentation, I would like to discourage this material, this information, look at some actual information myself, pull some information, and see how close we are to really $118 million. Because my suspicions are, we're not close to $118 million. With all respect to you gentlemen, nothing against you all. I think we're probably closer to 100, which means our debt situation is a lot worse than you're all presenting to us tonight. No, and again, it's no reflection on you all, please, I want you to understand that.
Well, let me explain something real quick. Accountants take the cost of a building, the cost of a car, and then we depreciate it over the life. So we, you get a value that goes down over time. He's correct that that City Hall or this building, I don't know right off the top of my head what the depreciated value is today, but could you go sell it for that? Some of your assets, you might be able to sell for a little bit more than you have in them, a lot of them, you're probably going to be able to sell for a little bit less.
Yeah, because theoretically, you'd depreciate this building to zero.
Exactly.
So you know you're going to get more than zero for it.
Exactly, so you would have to look, you'd almost have to do a full appraisal of your assets to get that comparison. If we could do a full appraisal, we could have a better number here, but we just have to take, yeah, it's just not.
Feasible, it's not feasible to do it.
It's not feasible to do a full appraisal of all your assets.
Because it costs you more to do that, and come back to us and say, well, your debt's 500, we owe you $500,000 for doing this because you have to get appraisals and so forth. So I want to get it, I dig it. So you have to come up with, you know, an idea. But right now, until we have an opportunity, unless other members of Council have any other differences here or any issues, maybe they, Mr. Hubbard's retired, so he can sit and look at numbers all day long, he digs it, that's his thing, you know? But some of us work for a living still, and until I have an opportunity to really review this, I think it's a wasted exercise of people's time that are here tonight, and our time to listen to this. I mean, we can look at this and so forth, but realistically, I think it's fruitless.
Well, I think the point here is this, this audit was done per governmental accounting standards, correct?
Right, correct.
Is there any reason that these audit numbers will change? Okay, so you're presenting these to the Council as the final audit numbers?
That's correct.
Council has the responsibility of accepting these numbers, we can do analysis afterwards, there is a time-sensitive bond sale transaction that has to occur, and it's based, the time sensitivity requires this audit, right? So the rating agencies and the bond council needs this accepted by Council as the city's audit. So if you're telling us these are all per government standards, they're the best assessment you can give us of the city's financial position, and your recommendation is, Ms. CFO, that Council accept this as the city's audit for the fiscal year, is that correct?
That is my recommendation.
With that said, that's the motion that we need to do with City Council, and we can do other presentations later and get more into the details, but unless other Council has comments or.
Move to approve.
I would like to make one comment. When you look, and you're talking about looking at the short run, and we talk about this a lot, but it does have a very big impact, that unassigned fund balance, and you can look in the material you gave us, how it's changed over the last four years and where it's at, and I think we're at 12%. And we just passed a policy, we wanted to get to 18, 15?
Somewhere.
18, yeah. So, I mean, it's moving in the right direction, and, you know, again, this is showing part of what we talked about at the last meeting, so.
I think overall, if you look at the numbers in there, there's some good things to talk about, and there's some not-so-good things to talk about. And so we've kind of seen that upstairs in the last hour, so we'll go through that in more detail. Before that, you're free to say one last thing, and then we'll have public comment real quick before we.
Yeah, I agree. I think, really, if you guys focus on page 13, that gives you a snapshot on full accrual and then modified accrual. And then as you go through page 14, you'll see more, a lot more financial data there. You'll get an idea, but overall, and I think there's some good points made, the debt levels are very high for the city. I think, I'm not telling you something you don't already know.
So the three things you would tell this Council we need to focus on?
Debt.
Get our debt under control, get a plan to manage it.
Right.
Break the solid waste fund even?
Yes.
What else? What's the third one?
Well.
Is there a third one? He's telling, he's telling you there's a third one, I'm asking, is there a third one?
Well, I'm going to tell you kind of how I would theoretically go about doing that, all of those things.
Tighten up on controls.
Kind of look at, kind of look at what do you need going forward? What do you need? What are your capital needs? You kind of know what your operations are, and when you're setting rates and fees and that sort of thing, have a five-year plan. It's this, your debt levels are high enough, you're not going to get them under, to an acceptable level in two or three years. So have a five-year plan to bring those debt levels down, hopefully while growing fund balance, but either one's fine with me. Have a five-year plan, you've got to do some long-term budgeting, if you will. So a five-year budget, or even if you went out further than that, would be fine, to lay out all your revenues, all your expenses, and figure out where your taxes need to be, where your rates need to be, so that you can make it viable.
Or we could do what, maybe get Jesus to come in here and get the 12 loaves of bread and 12 fish and feed the multitudes. I mean, literally, I mean, that would be a good number three and so forth and so on, but the realities are, that's not going to happen. I appreciate your all's work. When was this supposed to be in, by the way? When was this audit due?
November 30th this day.
November 30th, and today is what date?
January 9.
January 9. And it was presented when to the city?
Mr. Fleener.
I'm going to ask them, when was, when is this given to the city?
In final, in draft, or what?
When was this, when was this document that you provided us tonight, was, when was it given to the City Manager or the CFO?
This afternoon.
This afternoon. So, for the record.
The final copy.
For the record, and then there was a meeting at 5:15 today, and this was posted, I think, online around 12-something today, if I'm not mistaken? That's what my outlook shows. And you're expecting this Council, for bond purposes and so forth and so on, to approve this, so we can go through with this bond debt of $70 million? I mean, that's what the Council wants to do, that's not your all's issue. But the bottom line is, this is a month and a third late. Am I right or wrong?
That's correct.
That's correct. Not due to these gentlemen, though. This Council has responsibility, and the city staff has responsibility for that lateness.
They didn't get the info.
I don't blame these guys.
No, I know.
I'm just saying.
But it is late.
That's what was supposed to be due, that's what the law said was supposed to be due.
It's late.
I knew it was supposed to be due then, but here we are, asking.
It's late.
We're having a vote here. You asked for it to be approved, Mr. Hubbard? And you're asking within 12, less than 12 hours, in fact, since this was posted, six and a half hours, assuming people had an opportunity to read it, to approve something that they've acknowledged that they're estimating the values. Now, me, that's fine, do it, but I'm not going to take the responsibility to go with a charade and a facade. I'm not going to.
Motion's on the floor.
Motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. Public comments on this item?
There is one.
One public comment? Scott Campbell?
I actually came at 5:15 today to hear the presentation of this, and just so y'all know, you would have had an opportunity to ask those questions there. Everybody here asked their questions that they had, specific to the material that was being given, and that was a good amount of time, and actually, I heard some very productive discussion in there. Very respectful of these guys' time, and I'm a non-resident property owner here in town. My reason for being here tonight is to make public comment later at the end of the night on other things, too, but I actually just met Randy Eads today, and he's looking into some of the questions that I had. But I just, I find it interesting that I read a lot of the public discourse about the financial trouble that the city's in, and you've got guys standing here willing to give you a roadmap to solutions. Look, you know, pay attention to them, they're smart, they know what they're doing. Just in the very small amount of what I've heard, they have a very clear picture of what's going on, and they're doing it the way that they've been told to do it. So whether you personally understand the number or not, you know, it's kind of your responsibility to educate yourself, if you trust the background of what they're doing. So I'll just, that's my public comment on this, just based on what I've seen here the last two hours.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, I'm a taxpayer. I came down here tonight thinking I was going to hear the discussion of the audit. Nobody told me it was at 5:15. I'm not trying to cast aspersions on anyone as to how or why we missed the target of November 30. I have no clue. But the clue I do have is, I came down here to hear this discussed, and I missed the whole show. It wasn't my fault. Wasn't my fault. I may have been two minutes late, but it wasn't my fault. I think there is a great deal of merit in what Mr. Fleener has said, quite frankly. I do understand the urgency, according to what the mayor just now said. I can understand that, but it seems to me like this is a situation that we simply cannot tolerate.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hubbard, a second by Mr. Wingard, any Council discussion?
Was the motion to accept or approve, to accept? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
You said approve, so you're changing your motion.
Well, okay, if I did, yeah.
Well, if accepting is one thing, approving is another.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Okay, so it's accepting?
I made the motion to approve.
So the motion is to approve, Mr. Hubbard? Mr. Hartley, you understand that, too, now? I mean, it's not accept, it's approve.
It's the same thing, in my mind.
No, no, those are totally, I mean, to accept the audit as presented, I have no issue with. I mean, to approve the audit, I'm with Mr. Fleener, I mean, I would need a little bit of time to read through this, to approve. And even then, I don't know that I can approve what.
Right. I'll amend the motion to accept. I'll accept, the motion is to accept.
Okay, the motion's been amended to accept the audit.
Make sure that we have, do we, Mr. City Attorney, do we have to have a vote on the initial motion that Mr. Hubbard made to approve, and then, or do we, we can, he's removing that, and we can vote? I want to make sure that we are all on the right path legally here on this issue, because Mr. Hubbard's made a motion to approve, now he's withdrawing it. There's a difference between acceptance and approving, and if you can please, maybe look at the Webster's dictionary, I think that one is accepting, if they give it to us as presented, that's fine.
I think the motion is allowed to be amended, the second has to agree to it.
Now, you're okay, the second has to drop it off the table, because somebody seconded, didn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, the second has to approve the changed motion.
And your motion is to accept?
Yes.
I'll say it. Okay, so we have amended motion to accept the financial audit, and a second by Mr. Wingard. Any other Council discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Fleener?
As to accepting, yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
All right, on to item two. Public Private Education Infrastructure Act, PPEE update. Two minutes.
Mayor Mumpower, members of city council, I'm Gary Ritchie, Assistant Superintendent of Bristol, Virginia Schools. First of all, I'd like to give a very brief update. We anticipate, within the next few weeks, we will receive an unsolicited bid. We have been in contact with multiple construction design finance teams who plan to bid once the unsolicited bid has been accepted. We initially identified thirteen properties from across the city that were large enough to house an elementary school. And from that, our board narrowed those properties down to five in December. And they include Vampel, Lavenia, King Mill Pike slash Whitten Hills, property beside of that on King Mill Pike, which the city prop, city owns, and then one on Long Crescent. We have had two public hearings regarding consolidation and site selection, and we would like to thank Mr. Hartley, who has attended those meetings. And we do have plans to have two other meetings, and you are certainly welcome to attend. One of those is on the seventeenth at Washington Lee, and then eight, the eighteenth at Stonewall Jackson. Both of those meetings begin at six p.m. The meetings have been well-attended with excellent input. There has been tremendous support for the need to replace our deteriorating buildings, and there have been concerns, which include increased taxes, what will happen with the existing buildings, and traffic impact if Vampel is the chosen site. We will continue to update you as we progress. Keith sends his regards. He is in Richmond advocating for additional state funding.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I will say, as Mr. Ritchie pointed out, I, I went to both of these because it's not just in my capacity as a council member, but as a concerned parent, because it will affect my children. But I, I will commend the school board on their openness and transparency in this process of, of trying to reach as many people as they can through having four public hearings at all the schools. I will say that the two I went to, the tenor of the conversation was completely different, as, as probably expected. And one thing that struck me is that as this progresses forward, there are questions that are outside the, the school board's purview that we will have to address, and if this moves forward, the clock will be ticking. And one of those in particular is what to do with those structures if you close three schools. And that's a question that I heard at, at those, and, and that falls squarely back on council. So we need to be thinking about that, and, and I would even offer that, kind of do like the school board has, and go to the communities and have some meetings and try to see what the residents would like to see in those, with those schools do close, in their neighborhoods, and how we can help. But there, there were some issues, and you mentioned the traffic and some other things, that, that will come back to us, that, you know, we probably need to be aware of as this process moves forward. As far as the site, that, that is solely on y'all to select.
All right, thank you. Good work. All right, with that, we're moving on to what was item nine, which is now be item three.
Move to go into executive session. Oh, well, you have to do your thing, I guess.
Need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective Kansas for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. Council motion?
I have the motion, yes. Motion on table.
Second.
Mr. Hubbard is second. Please call a roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
We'll get started again. Following executive session, council reconvenes by roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Call a roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item three on the agenda, the original item three, which is now item four. Public hearing regarding an ordinance to convey lots nine, nineteen, and twenty-one of the Falls Development Project to the Industrial Development Authority. Open public hearing. So public hearing is now considered open. Staff report.
This is a, these lots here are small signage lots, sorry, these lots here are small signage lots at the Falls where the pylons for the business is, place their ads in order to be seen by people from the interstate and along Lee Highway. Currently, at the moment, the city owns these. Really, it's not city's best interest to own these signs, because there'll be upkeep associated with them, and the Falls LLC Development, they desire to own those signs and those parcels. And I'm suggesting that we convey those parcels over to Falls Development LLC in order for them to continue to maintain and upkeep those signs.
All right, anyone for public comment? All right. Closed public meeting? All right, next, the next item right behind it, consider the first reading of an ordinance to convey lots nine, nineteen, and twenty-one of the Falls Development Project to the Industrial Development Authority.
Move for first reading, second.
Stay of motion by Mr. Hubbard, a second by Mr. Wingard. Council discussion? Okay, seeing none. Please call a roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Ordinance to convey lot nine is described on platent titled The Falls Phase One and to convey lots nineteen and twenty, that's a typo, it should be lots nine, twenty, and twenty, lots nine, nineteen, and twenty-one. On platent titled Plat of Lots Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four, The Falls Phase Two, and The Falls Public Storm Drainage Asement Lot Six Phase One to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia. Whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia, here and after the city acquired a number of parcels of land located on Lee Highway near exit five of exit of Interstate eighty-one in the city of Bristol, Virginia. And whereas the city has partnered with Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, and Falls Development LLC through a development agreement for the development of a retail shopping center commonly referred to as The Falls. And whereas the city has caused a portion of the property to be subdivided on the platent titled The Falls Phase One, and on a platent titled Plat of Lots Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four, The Falls Phase Two, and the Public Storm Drainage Asement Lot Six Phase One, which will be recorded in the office of the clerk of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia, prior to the transfer of any lots located therein. And whereas the city wishes to transfer to the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, here and after the IDA, lots nine, nineteen, and twenty-one is described on the aforementioned plat. And whereas pursuant to section fourteen oh one of the charter of the city of Bristol, Virginia, the city expressly waves advertisement and other requirements, because this is a transfer of property to be used for economic development. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, that the city shall transfer the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, lots nine property, as lots nine property as will be more particularly described on the survey entitled The Falls Phase One, and lots nineteen and twenty-one property as will be more particularly described on the survey entitled Plots, Plat of Lots Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two, Twenty-Three, and Twenty-Four, The Falls Phase Two, and Public Storm Drainage Asement Lot Six Phase One, to be recorded in the office of the clerk of the Circuit Court for the city of Bristol, Virginia, prior to the transfer of any lots located therein. And be it further ordained that the city requests the Industrial Development Authority of Bristol, Virginia, accept the property and transfer it to The Falls Development LLC in accord with the party's development agreement at such time as it to be determined at the discretion of the IDA and interstate.
All right, thank you. All right, on to the next item. Consider resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation. Hmm? Has it already voted? Yeah. Next items, consider resolution requesting Virginia Department of Transportation add certain streets or segments to the city's urban highway system, and to revise streets currently in the city's urban highway system for your municipality maintenance payments. Staff report.
This resolution was adopted on January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, which added to the city's VDOT maintenance inventory list. This resolution here allows us to maintain certain of those streets as previously presented to council at that January twenty-fourth meeting.
Any, anyone sign up for public comment? Let's see, Nancy Marnie was all. Nancy, do you want to comment on this one or not?
Uh, no, I think I'll pay.
Okay. All right. Reading the resolution?
You need a, we need a motion first.
Well, it's not listed next, it's listed reading the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
Move for the reading. We'll go ahead and do it.
A resolution of the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation add certain streets or segments to the city's urban highway system, and to revise streets currently in the city's urban highway system for municipality maintenance payments. Whereas section thirty-three point two hyphen three nineteen of the Code of Virginia as amended authorizes payments to cities and towns for maintenance of certain highways. And whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation has established procedures for the addition of certain streets for the purpose of maintenance payments. And whereas the city of Bristol has accepted three point two moving lane miles of new streets or street segments identified on the attached form U one into the city's system of highways for the purpose of maintenance. Whereas the city of Bristol has performed an audit of the streets currently in the city urban highway system for municipality, municipality maintenance payments, and has identified data and/or mileage revisions that need to be made to existing streets in the urban highway system of the city of Bristol as indicated on the attached form U one. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, meeting in regular session this, the ninth day of January two thousand eighteen, petitions for the Virginia Department of Transportation to add those new streets identified on the attached form U one to the urban highway system, and to revise data and/or mileage for those streets in the existing streets urban highway system for the city of Bristol as identified on the attached form U one, this ninth day of January two thousand and eighteen.
All right, so now we need a council motion, second, to adopt the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution.
Motion by Mr. Hubbard to approve the resolution.
May I ask that you approve it with the changing of the date to January two thousand eighteen in that last paragraph?
Add that to the motion.
A second.
Second by Mr. Wingard. Council discussion?
Just one question, you said we did, and I remember doing this last year, is this an annual thing that we have to do for VDOT to approve these additions and deletions?
My understanding it is, if we have, if we need to go back and redo the city's streets, or if we add into it, it just depends on whether or not we have to go back and our, if, what happened last year, they went back, they measured some streets again, realized that we were doing more for streets that should be covered by VDOT. So I don't anticipate, are we doing anything this year in regards to that, Wallace, or?
Yeah, we're correcting the, they're off, a lot of streets are off by maybe a tenth of a mile or something like that, so we're, we're updating those, correcting those, which comes in our favor. And then we add certain of the streets, like Cavela Drive we extended, Paul Boulevard we extended, and there's some stuff on the highway that you can correct it as well.
It's always our advantage to get as many streets listed with VDOT as possible, because they pay us back for maintenance.
Add a little over ninety thousand.
Okay, while you're up there, I had one question.
Okay.
The, the auditors that just gave us the financial audit had a comment on page twelve. It said, urban highway maintenance. It says, our audit of daily maintenance logs from the streets department disclosed that specific streets are not being noted. The audit of public accounts specifications for audits of county, cities, and towns requires us to test expenditures spent on specific streets approved by the Department of Transportation. We recommend being more detailed on the daily street logs. Does this address that finding?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, what that details, it's, our street department has to maintain a log when they're doing certain things where you're getting VDOT reimbursement. In the past, our auditors said the way that they were doing things was appropriate. However, our auditors now would like to see a little bit more detail for the purpose of reimbursement from D, VDOT. This really isn't in Mr. McCullough's Bailey Wick, it's another department.
Well, I didn't know if their, my question was if their maintenance log is pulling off of his information, then their logs wouldn't be accurate, but I didn't know, that's why I was asking.
No, it's just simply what street they were working, what times were they working on that street.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Any other questions or comments by city council? Okay. Call a roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
All right, next item, consider resolution authorizing the issuance of sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a resolution that is regarding the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds. The city will refinance fifty million dollars of debt related to the Falls Development Project, and roughly twenty-six million dollars of debt related to other borrowing. Previous city councils have approved the borrowing of these funds, and it, we're at a point now where these fu, previous funds need to be refinanced.
So for clarification, this is basically the same, this is the approval of the same option that Davenport has presented to this council over the last couple of months that we voted on, which was option four. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, anybody sign up for public comment? Ms. Marnie be the only one, no, no comment? All right, doing a reading of the resolution?
If I may say, counsel, this is five pages.
By it caption only?
Well, given the fact that the length of the resolution, the fact that there are copies back there for the public, could you do that by?
There, there is a provision for that, where it can be done that way, through-
Maybe we do that.
I think-
If I may say, technically, I think that's under, I think it's a portion of research on Robert's Rules of Order. I don't think we operate under that, we haven't adopted that, so I'm unsure if it would be appropriate for us to do it. I'd feel more comfortable legally to go ahead and read it. I will read it quickly.
That's fine. I think we have done that in the past with certain things, that's why I brought it up, but, yeah.
Let's not miss this one. I may have to take a drink here now and then. Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand eighteen of the city of Bristol, Virginia, and providing for the form details and payment thereof. The city of Bristol, Virginia, parentheses, the city, is a political subdivision of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and pursuant to the Public Finance Act of nineteen ninety-one, chapter twenty-six, title fifteen point two, Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty as amended, the act, the council of the city, parentheses, the council, is authorized to contract debts on behalf of the city and to issue, as evidence thereof, bonds, notes, or other obligations payable from pledges of the full faith and credit of the city. The city hereby determines that it is in the best interest of the city to issue its taxable general obligation refunding bonds to, one, refund, A, certain maturities of the city's three million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar general obligation public improvement bonds, series two thousand six B. B, certain maturities of the city's four million, fifty-five thousand general obligation public improvement bonds, series two thousand seven B. C, an improvement refunding bonds, series two thousand seven C. I'm just sorry, I skipped. C, a portion of the tw, of the two, twenty twenty-three maturity of the city's twelve million, fifty thousand taxable general obligation public improvement refunding bonds, series two thousand seven C. D, all or a portion of certain maturities of the city's sixteen million, one hundred and ninety thousand general obligation public improvement and refunding bonds, series two thousand ten. E, the city's thirty million dollar taxable general obligation refunding note, series two thousand fifteen B. F, the city's seventeen million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollar taxable general obligation refunding notes, series two thousand fifteen C. And G, the city's three million dollar general obligation bond, series two thousand sixteen And G, the city's three million dollar general obligation bond, series two thousand sixteen B. Collectively, the refunded obligations and two, pay the cost of issuing the bonds. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, section one, authorization, issuance, and sale. There is hereby authorized to be issued and sold pursuant to the Constitution and statutes of the Commonwealth of Virginia, including the act, taxable general obligation refunding bond of the city in the maximum aggregate principal amount, left blank momentarily, to one, refund the refunded obligations and two, pay the cost of issuing the bonds. The council hereby elects to issue such taxable general obligation refunding bonds under the provisions of the act and without regard to the city charter. Section two, bond details, the bond shall be designated taxable general obligation refunding bond, series two thousand eighteen, the bonds. The bond shall be dated, the date of their issuance and delivery shall be issued in registered form in denominations of five thousand dollars and multiples thereof and shall be numbered R one and upward. Subject to section four, the bond shall have a final maturity of no later than January one, two thousand forty-three. The bonds may mature in installments or have mandatory sinking fund installments on each January one beginning no later than two thousand twenty and ending no later than two thousand forty-three. Interest on the bond shall be payable on July one, two thousand eighteen and semi-annually thereafter on each January first and July first through maturity, unless other semi-annual dates are approved by the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act. The council authorizes the issuance and sale of the bonds to Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated and FTN Financial Capital Markets, the underwriters, on such terms as shall be satisfactory to the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act, provided that the bonds, A, shall have a true or Canadian interest cost not to exceed blank percent per year, taking into account any original issue discount or premium. B, shall be sold to the underwriters at a purchase price equal to not less than blank percent of the original aggregate principal amount thereof, parentheses, not taking into account any underwriter's discount, and C, shall be issued in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed blank number of dollars. If determined by the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act, to be desirable, the bonds may be issued with the bond issue, insurance, and security for the principal and interest payments thereon. If interest cost savings relative to the insurance premium paid will result therefrom. The form of bond set forth in exhibit A may be amended to accommodate the requirements of the bond insurance company. The bonds may be issued in series with different terms as long as such terms are within the parameters noted above. Such series may also be issued from time to time. Principal and premium, if any, of the bonds shall be payable to the registered owners upon the surrender of the bonds as they become due at the designated corporate trust office of the registrar as defined below. Interest shall be payable by check or by wire to the registered owners at their addresses as they appear on the registration books kept by the registrar with respect to the bonds as of the close of business on the fifteenth day of the month immediately preceding the month in which each interest payment date occurs. In case a date of maturity or redemption of the principal of any bond or an interest payment date shall be a date on which banking institutions are authorized or obligated by law to close at the place where the designated corporate trust office of the registrar is located. Then payment of principal and interest need not be made on such date, but may be made on the next succeeding date, which is not such a date at the place where the designated corporate trust office of the registrar is located. And if made on such succeeding date, no additional interest shall accrue for the period after such date of maturity or redemption or interest payment date. Principal, premium, if any, and interest on the bond shall be payable in lawful money of the United States of America. Interest on the bond shall be calculated on the basis of a three hundred and sixty day year with twelve, thirty day months. Each bond shall bear interest from the interest payment date next preceding the date on which it is authenticated, unless such bond is, A, authenticated before July one, two thousand eighteen, in which case it will bear interest from its dated date, or B, authenticated upon an interest payment date or after the record date with respect thereto, in which case it will bear interest from such interest payment date, unless payment of interest thereon is in default, in which case interest on such bonds shall be payable from the date to which interest has been paid. Section three, book entry system, initially one bond certificate for each maturity of each series of bonds shall be issued to and registered in the name of the depository trust company, New York, New York, parentheses, DTC, or its nominee. The city has entered into a letter of representations relating to a book entry system to be maintained by DTC with respect to the bonds. As used herein, as used herein, the term securities depository shall mean DTC or any other securities depository for the bonds appointed pursuant to section three. In the event that, A, the securities depository determines not to continue to act as a securities depository for bonds by giving notice to the registrar and the city, or B, the city in its sole discretion determines, one, to select new securities depository, or two, that beneficial owners of bonds shall be able to obtain certified bonds, then the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act, shall at the discretion of the city attempt to locate another qualified securities depository to serve as security depository or arrange for the authentication, delivery of certificated bonds to the beneficial owners or to the securities depository participants on behalf of beneficial owners, substantially in the form provided for in exhibit A. In delivering certificated bonds, the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act, shall be entitled to rely on the records of the securities depository as to the beneficial owners or the records of the securities depository participants acting on behalf of beneficial owners. Such certificated bonds will then be registrable, transferable, and exchangeable as set forth in section eight. Just more. So long as there is a securities depository for the bonds, one, or its nominee shall be the registered owner of the bonds. Two, notwithstanding anything to the contrary in this resolution, determinations of persons entitled to payment or principal, premium, if any, and interest transfers of ownership and exchanges and receipt of notices shall be the responsibility of the securities depository and shall be affected pursuant to rules and procedures established by such securities depository. Three, the registrar and the city shall not be responsible or liable for maintaining, supervising, reviewing the records maintained by the securities depository, its participants or persons acting through such participants. Four, references in this resolution to registered owners of the bonds shall mean such securities depository or its nominee and shall not mean the beneficial owners of the bonds. And five, in the event of any inconsistency between the provisions of this resolution and the provisions of the above referenced letter of representations, such provisions of the letter of representations accept to the extent set forth in this paragraph and the next preceding paragraph as shall control. Section four, redemption provisions. A, optional redemption, the bonds may be subject to redemption prior to their stated dates of maturity at the option of the city in whole or in part in increments of five thousand dollars. On redemption dates to be determined by the city in consultation with the underwriters and upon payment of a redemption price to be determined by the city in consultation with the underwriters, plus interest accrued and unpaid to the redemption date, subject to the limitation that any bonds maturing on or after January one, two thousand twenty-nine shall be subject to optional redemption no later than January one, two thousand twenty-eight, upon payment of a redemption price no greater than one hundred and three percent of the principal amount of the bonds to be redeemed, except in the instance of a make-whole redemption provision plus interest accrued and unpaid to the redemption date. B, mandatory sinking fund redemption. Any term bonds or any series may be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption as determined by the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act, if there are any term bonds subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption on or before the seventieth, seventieth day next preceding any mandatory sinking fund redemption date. The city may apply as a credit against the city's mandatory sinking fund redemption obligation any bonds of the same series of maturity that previously have been optionally redeemed or purchased or canceled or surrendered for cancellation by the city and not previously applied as credit against any mandatory sinking fund redemption obligation for such bonds of the same series and maturity. Each such bond so purchased, delivered, or previously redeemed shall be credited one hundred percent of the principal amount thereof against the principal amount of the bonds of the same series and maturity required to be redeemed on such mandatory sinking fund redemption date. Any principal amount of bonds so purchased, delivered, or previously redeemed in excess of the principal amount required to be redeemed on such mandatory sinking fund redemption date shall similarly reduce the principal amount of the bonds of the same series and maturity be redeemed on future mandatory sinking fund redemption dates as selected by the mayor, the city manager, or the chief financial officer, any of whom may act. C, bonds selected for redemption. If less than all the bonds of any series are called for optional redemption, the maturity of the bonds of that series to be redeemed shall be selected by the mayor, the city manager, or the city's chief financial officer, any of whom may act in such manner as he or she may determine to be in the best interest of the city. If less than all the bonds of any maturity or of any series are called for redemption, the bonds of that maturity and series to be redeemed shall be selected by DTC or any successor securities depository pursuant to its rules and produces, or if the book entry system is discounted, shall be selected by the registrar by lot in such manner as the registrar in its discretion may determine. In either case, A, the portion of any bond to be redeemed shall be in the principal amount of five thousand dollars or some integral multiple thereof. And B, in selecting bonds for redemption, each bond shall be considered as representing that number of bonds and that is obtained by dividing the principal amount of such bond by five thousand dollars. If a portion of a bond is called for redemption, a new bond of the same series and maturity and principal amount equal to the unredeemed portion thereof will be issued to the registered owner upon the surrender thereof. D, notice of redemption, the city shall cause notice of the call for redemption, identifying the bonds or portions thereof to be redeemed, to be sent by electronic or facsimile transmission, registered or certified mail, or overnight express delivery not less than thirty nor more than sixty days prior to the redemption date to DTC or its nominee as a registered owner of the bonds, or if the book entry system is discounted by registered or certified mail to the registered owners of the bonds to be redeemed. Section five, execution on authentic, and authentication. The bond shall be signed by the manual or facsimile signature of the city or vice mayor. The city's seal shall be affixed thereto or facsimile thereof printed thereon and attested to by the manual or facsimile signature of the city clerk or deputy city clerk, provided that no bond shall be valid until it has been authenticated by the manual signature of an authorized representative of the registrar and the date of authentication noted thereon. In case any officer whose signature or facsimile of whose signature shall appear on any bond shall cease to be such officer before the delivery of a bond, such signature or such facsimile shall nevertheless be valid and sufficient for all purposes the same as if such officer had remained in office until such delivery. Any bond may bear the facsimile signature of or may be signed by such persons who at the actual time of the execution thereof shall be the proper officers to sign such bond although.
No, three more to go.
Such bond, although at the date of such bond, such persons may not have been such officers. Upon execution and authentication, the bond shall be delivered to or on behalf of the underwriters upon payment therefore. Section six, bond forms. The bond shall be in substantially a form set forth in exhibit A attached here too. The bonds may have such appropriate variations, insertions, and/or admissions as shall be consistent with this resolution and the bond purchase agreement as hereinafter defined. Section seven, pledge of the full faith and credit, the full faith and credit of the city are irrevocably pledged for the payment of principal, premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Unless other bonds are lawfully available and appropriated for timely payment of the bonds, the city shall levy and collect an annual ad valorem tax over and above all other taxes authorized or limited by law and without limitation as to the rate or amount on any all locally taxable property in the city sufficient to pay the principal of, premium, if any, and the interest on the bonds as the same become due. Section eight, registration, transfer, and owners of bonds, US Bank National Association Richmond and Virginia is hereby appointed paying agent and registrar for the bonds, the registrar. The registrar shall maintain the registration books for the registration of the bonds. Upon surrender of any bonds at the designated corporate trust office of the registrar, together with an assignment duly executed by the registered owner or his duly authorized attorney or legal representative in such form as shall be satisfactory to the registrar. The city shall execute and the registrar shall authenticate and deliver and exchange a new bond or bonds of the same series having an equal aggregate, aggregate principal amount and authorized denominations of the same form and maturity bearing interest at the same rate and registered in names as requested by the then-registered owner or his duly authorized attorney or legal representative. Any such exchange shall be at the expense of the city, except that registrar may charge the person requesting such exchange an amount of any tax or governmental charge required to be paid with respect thereto. The registrar shall treat the registered owner as a person exclusively entitled to payment of principal, premium, if any, and interest and exercise of all other rights and powers of the owner, except that interest payments shall be made to the person shown as owner on the registration books on the fifteenth day of the month immediately preceding the month in which each interest payment date occurs. Neither the city nor the registrar shall be required to issue, transfer, or exchange any bonds during the period from when any such record date for the payment of interest to such interest payment date. New bonds delivered upon any transfer, exchange shall be valid obligations of the city evidencing the same debt as the bond surrendered. Shall be secured by this resolution and entitled to all the security and benefits hereof to the same extent of the bond surrendered. Section nine, sale of bonds, bond purchase agreement, the council formally approves the sale of the bonds to the underwriters through a negotiated underwriting. The terms of the negotiated sale shall be set forth in a bond purchase agreement between the city and the underwriters to be dated on or about the date of the sale of the bonds, the bond purchase agreement. The bonds will be awarded and sold to the underwriters in accordance with the terms of the bond purchase agreement, subject to the parameters set forth in this resolution. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, are each authorized and directed to review the form of the bond purchase agreement and to execute and deliver the bond purchase agreement on behalf of the city and subject to the limitations in sections two and four and in consultation with the underwriters. One, determine the aggregate principal amount of the bonds. Two, determine the maturity schedule of the bonds. Three, establish a redemption provision including dates and redemption prices for the bonds. Four, determine the purchase price at which the bonds are sold to underwriters. And five, determine the interest rate on the bonds. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, are each authorized to determine whether the issuance of any term bonds would be beneficial to the city and may change the dated date of the bonds and the payment dates provided therein, so long as the interest payment dates for any series are semi-annual, to facilitate the sale and delivery of bonds. The mayor, the vice mayor, and the city clerk or the deputy city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to have the bonds prepared and issued in accordance with the terms to be set forth in the bond purchase agreement, subject to the parameters set forth in this resolution. The council hereby ratifies and approves all actions taken by the city manager and his staff prior to the date of the adoption of the resolution in connection with the soliciting and evaluating alternatives for the sale of bonds. Section ten, official statement. The council hereby approves and authorizes the use and distribution of the preliminary official statement relating to the bonds dated the date of its distribution, parentheses, the preliminary official statement, in substantially the form presented at this meeting. The council also approves and authorizes the use and distribution of an appendix to the preliminary official statement describing the city. The council further authorizes the mayor, the city manager, and chief financial officer, any of whom may act, to complete with the preliminary official statement and to deem it to be in final form as of its date within the meaning of rule. Fifteen C two hyphen twelve of the Securities and Exchange Commission, the rule, except for the omission of certain pricing and other information allowed to be omitted pursuant to the rule. The delivery of the preliminary official statement to the underwriters in connection with the offering of the bonds will constitute conclusive evidence that the preliminary official statement has been deemed final as of its date. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, shall make such completions, omissions, insertions, and changes in the preliminary official statement not inconsistent with this resolution and the bond purchase agreement as are necessary or desirable to complete. It is as a final official statement, the official statement. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, shall arrange for the delivery to the underwriters of a reasonable number of copies of the official statement with, in seven business days after the bonds have been sold for delivery to each potential investor requesting a copy of the official statement and to each person to whom the underwriters initially sell bonds. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, are each authorized on behalf of the city to deem the official statement to be final as of its date within the meaning of the rule. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, are each authorized and directed to execute the official statement, such execution being conclusive evidence that the official statement has been deemed final. Section eleven, continuing disclosure, under the rule, the city will be required to provide certain annual reports and certain reports of extraordinary events to the electronic municipal market access system maintained by the municipal securities rulemaking board or any additional or subsequent internet-based electronic filing system approved by the Securities and Exchange Commission. These requirements will be set forth in a continuing disclosure certificate to be executed by the city, the continuing disclosure certificate, evidencing conformity with certain provisions of the rule, a copy of which continuing disclosure certificate is appended to the preliminary official statement. The mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, are authorized and directed to execute and deliver the continuing disclosure certificate on behalf of the city. The city hereby covenants and agrees that will comply with and carry out all the provisions of the continuing disclosure certificate. Notwithstanding any other provision of this resolution, failure of the city to comply with the continuing disclosure certificate shall not be considered the fault under this resolution or the bonds, provided that any holder of the bonds, including owners of beneficial interest in bonds, may take such actions as may be necessary and appropriate, including seeking mandamus or specific performance by court order to cause the city to comply with its obligations under the section eleven and the continuing disclosure certificate. Section twelve, preparation and delivery of bonds, after the bond purchase agreement has been executed and delivered on behalf of the city, the mayor, vice mayor, and the city clerk or deputy city clerk are authorized and directed to take all proper steps to have the bonds prepared, executed, and authenticated in accordance with the terms and to deliver the bonds to the underwriters upon payment thereof, therefore. Section thirteen, discharge upon payment of bonds, the bonds may be defeased as permitted by the act. Any defeasance of the bonds as permitted by the act shall not release the city or the registrar from its obligations hereunder to register and transfer bonds or release the registrar from its obligations to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds as contemplated herein until the date of all the bonds are paid. Section fourteen, refunding escrow agreement, the council hereby irrevocably calls for the optional redemption of the refundable obligations that are to be optionally redeemed rather than paid at maturity on the dates that constitute the first optional call dates therefore, provided however that for refunded obligations that are currently called. obligations that are currently called, well, such dates are to be not less than ten nor more than sixty days after the date of issuance of the bonds, all the foregoing dates being referred to herein as redemption dates, at a redemption price equal to one hundred percent of the principal amount of the refunded obligations plus accrued interest to the redemption dates. To facilitate the defeasance of the refunded obligations and the payment of the principal and the interest on the refunded obligations from the issuance date of the bonds through the redemption date, the council hereby authorizes the use of an escrow agreement dated as of the date of its execution and delivery, the escrow agreement between the city and U.S. Bank National Association as escrow agent. The council hereby authorizes the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, and the escrow agent to, one, with the advice of the underwriters, obtain competitively a portfolio of securities, and/or, two, invest the proceeds as otherwise permitted by law until the redemption dates. The council hereby authorizes the mayor, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, any of whom may act, to execute and deliver the escrow agreement on behalf of the city. Section fifteen, other actions. All other actions the council members, officers, employees, and agents of the city in conformity with the purposes and intent of this resolution and in furtherance of the issuance and sale of the bonds are approved and confirmed. The officers and staff of the city are authorized and directed to execute and deliver all certificates and instruments and to take all such further actions as may be considered necessary or desirable in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the bonds. Any reference to an office holder herein shall include a person acting in such capacity or serving in such capacity on an interim basis pursuant due to authority. The vice mayor may take any action hereunder with respect to which the mayor has been authorized to act. Section sixteen, limitation of liability of officials of the city. No covenant, condition, agreement, or obligation contained herein shall be deemed to be a covenant, condition, agreement, or obligation of a council member, officer, employee, or agent of the city in his or her individual capacity, and no officer of the city executing the bonds shall be liable personally on the bonds or be subject to any personal liability or accountability by reason of the issuance thereof. No council member, officer, employee, or agent of the city shall incur any personal liability with respect to any other action taken by him or her pursuant to this resolution, provided he or she acts in good faith. Section seventeen, contract with bondholders. The provisions of this resolution shall constitute a contract between the city and the holders of the bonds for so long as any of the bonds are outstanding. Notwithstanding foregoing, this resolution may be amended by the city in any manner that does not, in the opinion of the city and the registrar, materially adversely affect the holders of the bonds of the registrar. Section eighteen, repeal of conflicting resolutions. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith are repealed. Section nineteen, effective date. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. The city clerk and any deputy city clerk are hereby authorized and directed to see the immediate filing of a certified copy of this resolution with the Circuit Court of the City of Bristol, Virginia, adopted January nine, two thousand and eighteen. Exhibit A, form of bonds.
I forgot to turn on my hearing aid. Could you read that again?
Thanks for reading it fast, though, Mr. Reeves, really. I mean, I couldn't imagine slow. I just couldn't imagine.
It sounds like they want us to pay it back if we borrow the money.
I think we're required to pay it back, and as much as I hated to read that, I think it's important for it to be read so that the people, the people in the public can at least say that it wasn't read out loud and they know what the council's doing, so I do think it was important. And I apologize.
We need to give a copy today so we get that in the paper.
The people out in TV land, they watch something else, I'm sure, while this was going on. I mean, you could watch a full half-hour episode or something, but thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Mr. Rose with Dan Ford has one quick thing he needs to add.
I'll just fill in the blanks if I can, Mr. Mayor. You give me a second here. So the blanks to fill in is the maximum amount is seventy-seven million. That true or Canadian interest cost is not to exceed a five-point-seven-five percent, and the purchase price is not less than ninety-eight percent of the original aggregate principal amount of the bonds, not taking into account the underwriters' discounts. So those are the little fill-ins there. No changes, but I just want to make sure you have that, so, thank you.
Mr. Rose?
That was twenty-six minutes, by the way.
Twenty-six minutes?
Twenty-six minutes.
Everybody in the audience is smarter now as a consequence of that twenty-six minutes. I mean, I'm sure everybody understood all that stuff, but, Mr. Rose, can I ask you a question just real briefly?
Yes, sir.
Instead of approving, we accepted the audit.
Yes, sir.
Oh, now, does that, I mean, it seemed to me, maybe I'm reading between the lines, does that have any effect whatsoever, the way we accepted the audit and so forth, instead of approving it? Does that have any effect?
You did it that the right way. You accept it. You accept it because you're accepting delivery of that audit as official body. There's no concept of approving or disapproving. That's correct, Mr. Fleener.
I just want to make sure. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. So at this time on that resolution that Randy just professionally read to us, we need a council motion in a second.
Next time, do we have to do this again? I mean, do we have another reading of this?
The next time, I'll record it in particular. I'll record it a few days beforehand and hit play, so...
Well, I move to accept this.
Mr. Fleener moves to accept.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hubbard.
This needs to be a move to approve.
Move to approve? Move to approve, then, Mr. Reeves, thank you.
Move to approve, second by Mr. Hubbard. Any council discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Fleener?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Bump Howard? Yes. All right, on the next item, consider economic development incentive awards for American Merchant Incorporated. Staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff recommends we just go right to vote with this, since Randy took so much time before. No, this is to consider an incentive award for American merchants. There are three items presented, and that is the Tobacco Regional Opportunity Fund, the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, and lastly, a deed of trust. The Tobacco Region Opportunity Fund and the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund have both been discussed during several executive sessions, and all three final drafts of these documents were included in your packets. Hopefully, you've had time to look over those. Both the documents are the standard agreements developed by the Tobacco Commission and the governor's office, so it's the deed of trust that we developed here, and that was developed by the city attorney, and that has been approved and signed by the American merchant. The company was actually given three options, and that was outlined in Exhibit A in your packet, and they chose to exercise a deed of trust, and so that has been notarized and signed by Robert Burton, their chairman. The two agreements that are state-level, that's incentives, and no monies will be provided by us as the city, all those funds will be provided by state-level incentives. We will administer the funds, so we will receive the funds and then transfer those funds to the company when milestones are met, and those milestones are spelled out in both agreements, and we have thirty days to verify that before we give the funds out or return the funds to either the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund or the trough. Any questions?
All right, next thing is a public comment. We had, I think, Michael Pollard signed up for public comment?
I think Nancy was ahead of me on the list.
Okay, Nancy as well. Nancy puts all, so she didn't write the number down, so you never know which one it is, so...
You're so picky. I'm afraid you won't call on me if I think there's something and haven't signed up. My name is Nancy Marty. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. I'm a taxpayer. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your indulgence. I'm still skeptical about this American merchant company. I'm skeptical about the financial procedures. Now, my understanding is that there is a grant from somebody or the other in the state of Virginia. What is that, three hundred thousand dollars, something like that?
Governor's fund.
All right, governor's fund, well, anyway. And then there's another grant from the Tobacco Commission's, what is that, seven-eight, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand? Is that?
Five-ninety.
What?
Five-hundred-and-ninety thousand.
All right, five-hundred-and-ninety, thank you. And then there is a letter of something, and I don't know what that is.
The deed of trust?
Deed of trust.
That's our provision for a clawback. The Tobacco Commission requires us to be first in line to pay back during a default, and so we added the deed of trust to protect ourselves in that event.
All right. Now, I've got several concerns here. In the first place, I understand they have bought and paid for the building, fine, but I don't understand why a business no bigger than this could not pay its own way or go to the bank. Why do we have to go through the governor's fund, the tobacco money, and a deed of trust? Is there not another higher and better use for a request to the governor's fund and to the tobacco fund? Now, how many times a year can we tap into that well? How many times can we request money from the tobacco company, and how many are funded? How many times can we request money from the governor's fund? Once a year? Once every five years? Is there a limit?
Not that I'm aware of.
One, Ms. Marty, one thing, we did not request this money. The company requested directly. We're just a conduit for the money to be given.
Well, I don't even know why we're doing that. We didn't own the building. We didn't own the property. We don't own the business. If they want to come here and do business, they bring their own money. That's the way I look at that. Now, it is also my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that if they default on anything, and I know there are certain restrictions and certain requirements, but if they don't maintain that four-hundred-and-five people on the payroll, or whatever the figure is, then there's a little activity that goes on, and if they don't meet the requirements of getting this money, are we on the hook? Is the City of Bristol, Virginia going to have to pick up the tab on the tobacco money? Whatever happened to the tobacco money for the New Life out there? Where is that money?
There was never any tobacco money given to New Life Glass.
Well, according to my telephone conversation, there was. Who am I talking to? You. I thought there were any...
The walls are talking.
According to my conversation at one point with them, there was.
No, there was never any Tobacco Commission, there was never any tobacco funds or governor. The only thing that they received was...
At New Life?
At New Life.
The tobacco people seem to think there was, but I'll take your word for this particular point. Now, my question is this. If there is any way that this bunch does not meet the criteria, are we going to be on the hook for this money? Now, let's look at this wastewater treatment. You know, there are byproducts in the textile industry. Now, is it going to be cheaper, easier, and quicker just to clean up a little and dump it in the creek? We just got over that with Washington County. We've just gotten over that.
EPA is not going to allow that to happen.
Oh, the EPA is high and footed. They don't always live up to what they're supposed to do anyway.
That's what courts are for.
That's what?
That's what courts are for.
Well, then, roll up your sleeves. Now, I've talked with the EPA before about things. I have talked with the quality control people. I have the numbers at home. I'm a big telephone user. I have five extensions in the house. I answer and use all of them. Now, they do not always do what they're supposed to be doing, you know. It's a political job. That doesn't mean they never do it. It just means that every now and then, they may not. So I wouldn't put much faith in that. But my point is this. Are you all getting ready to lead this little city right back into the same situation we're trying to get out of? Where we put up money we had no business putting up in the first place? They ought to finance their own business. It isn't that big a business if all they need is another million dollars. But this little city is so desperate for things, and yet we're using the governor's money for that, and we're using tobacco money for that, and I would think in a way we have higher and better uses for that request than to give these people money. They ought to have come into that business within hand.
You're at your limit.
I am very skeptical. I'm very skeptical about this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marty.
And my foot's going to hit that one of these days.
Michael Pollard?
Don't charge you a dollar and a half for a replacement light. Don't charge you a dollar and a half for a replacement light bulb. Thank you, gentlemen of the city council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at one-on-one Ashley Drive. My comments were concerning this. Yes, I would potentially have some reservations I could express concerning the arrangements if I wanted to, but I would like to say this instead. Three years ago, on the same day, we got into an arrangement with New Life Glass. That was handled at ten o'clock in the morning without any public information, and even now, the minutes from that meeting do not include the text of the agreement. We seconded a grant for New Life Glass, which I understand we may have been an opportunity fund grant that we did not have to then stand behind because that was handled directly between the fund and the business. In this case, the public was provided all of the documentation in advance. We were provided opportunity to speak about it at a regularly scheduled meeting, and the funds are only provided to the business after they have already qualified to receive those funds, not in advance, and we further have a deed of trust in the property that will help guarantee our interests, and it's against property that we didn't give them in the first place. They've actually paid upfront for their own property. Yes, they're going to get almost a million dollars in incentives, but it's not our incentives, it's the state incentives. It's not coming out of a minimal list that we can draw against. It's between the company and the state. I think it might be misuse of the state's funds, but that's up to them, and we're protecting our interests. And I am, as I have put it in other situations, cautiously optimistic, at least our interests have been covered in this, and we have all sorts of potential to get a lot of gain out of this. It's got the potential for a large number of good-paying jobs, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. I guess that's all for public comment. So at this point, on consideration for this economic development incentive award that's in our package, need a council motion in a second.
Oh, hang on. Before we do that...
Council discussion after the motion in a second.
So moved, excuse me, so moved for the economic development incentive awards for American Merchant Incorporated, second.
All right, so we got a motion from Mr. Hubbard, a second from Mr. Wingard, now council discussion. Mr. Fleener?
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to respond a little bit to Ms. Marty's questioning. Here's the thing, here's the tricky thing about this, that this kind of dawned on me. We are essentially, and if I read the newspaper when this thing came out, no Bristol, Virginia involvement, you know, no local incentives, I think that's how it was phrased, Mr. McGee. And now we're coming back here, and let me just tell you where we get stuck. New Life Glass off our tax rolls, for all intents and purposes. For all intents and purposes. Now, this, I love to see jobs, I'll say that, Mr. Pollard, I love to see good-paying jobs, but I don't believe number one that Bristol needs to any way, shape, or form obligate itself. By all corporation, they're going to secure this with a deed of trust on the property. Guess what? If we have to pay it back, we have to sell the building, and if we can, we can, or whatever, but guess what? Off the tax rolls. Potentially off the tax rolls. And I'll just tell you, tired of buying jobs. I agree with you, I don't know these people. I think it's a good idea to get jobs, but I'm going to tell you one. There is no way, with what I'm hearing tonight, that I'm prepared to obligate this city to take something potentially off the tax rolls and so forth and so on, and that's what we'd be doing with a deed of trust. Their deed of trust is securing this indebtedness, and they can just simply walk away. Period. And Bristol's stuck executing a deed of trust on a company that has, for all intents and purposes, little if any assets. purposes, little, if any, assets. Now, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. We've got New Life Building, which is vacant, and a farce. And it doesn't surprise me that three years ago, Mr. Pollard, this is how it was done. Look at the team. No way on God's green earth will I endorse this group of thing from these gentlemen back here. Don't know them from Adam. They're not from here. Sorry. Not under these circumstances.
Okay, other council comments?
I'm satisfied with the protection we have. We get a building and land for $590,000 if they skate. I think we can sell it for that kind of money pretty quickly.
Well, that was sold Bristol and New Life. We were going to do all these wonderful things, and look what we got. We got 20 tons of waste that's not been removed from the decision of council three years ago. 20 tons.
I don't know what's left. They've been removing some of it, but how much is left, I don't know.
Some has been moved, but we're in the range of 14 to 20 million pounds.
So, I'm pretty accurate, wasn't I? What I just said, yeah. So, this is another decision, and this is what we're stuck with. So, what are we going to get stuck with here? You know? And by the way, state money is our money. Okay? So, we fool ourselves by saying it came from the state. Therefore, we're not obligation. We have no obligations. If you pay state taxes in this state, then guess what? It's coming out of your pocket. And to think anything other than that is a farce and a mistake.
Well, I have to say that, you know, New Life was three years ago. That was a city-owned building, and, you know, we made some mistakes. The city did at that time with incentives on that, but this is a whole 'nother environment right here. This is a publicly owned building. They came into town. They're willing to come in here and invest in this city, create jobs. And the restrictions and guidelines that we've put on this far exceeds any risk. If we do have to take this building back, then the return on that investment at 590 is about 25 cents on the dollar, really, because the building's worth, what, $2 million, $3 million? And we're only going on the hook for 590? So, those are real numbers to work with. And the potential to gain, if everything plays out the way it's been presented, it's going to be a great thing for this city. You know, why are they going for this tobacco money? Probably just because it's there. You know, these businesses, they look out there and they see what's available to them to come in and help them get established. And if it's free money and they qualify, then, you know, they got the mindset, why not go for it? You know, why not? It's there. And, but, you know, they have to come through a locality to get it. They've requested it. We see the need for it and willing to assist, but like Mr. Pollard said, you know, we've got enough in, what's the word I'm looking for? Restrictions to hold them accountable. And should they fault on it, we're not going to lose on this one.
Plus, that amount of money won't be dispersed unless they've already fully implemented their agreement. So, I mean, it may be if they leave town early, they will only picked up 100 grand or 200 grands. I mean, we still get the building.
I challenge you to look at the American made. I think they're in Jefferson County, Tennessee. And if you've looked at what they were to do and so forth and so on, and what they've actually done as far as jobs and so forth and growth, they are not synonymous with one another. And this has been an ongoing situation. And so, I challenge you to look at the predecessors' companies and what have been promised in other jurisdictions. And, you know, talks one thing, actually performing is another, so.
Yeah, but we have enough in play to protect this city, and that's our ultimate goal, is to move this city forward and protect it along the way. And those things have been done.
I would agree. I mean, to me, there's, you know, we're not giving them the money right away. They have to perform, and there's multiple milestones, so they have to get halfway and then to the finish line to get all the money. And there are the deed of trust and clawbacks that are, I think, sufficient to cover our interests should they not meet up to their obligations. I hope they do because this is a great opportunity for the city to add some well-needed manufacturing jobs.
Well, I mean, with all respect, Mr. Hartley, I do agree. It's an opportunity if it happens and if it's done. But, you know, again, we've been promised so many things, and, you know, we're over-secured. Yeah, good luck after a company comes in, if they come in, and so forth and so on, and whatever the depreciation is on the building and so forth and so on. Good luck with the 590,000, and in my opinion, I think there's things that we're going to end up being wrong about again. And I respect the decisions you all make. I certainly want to see it work, but I have reservations and based on my research. And it's...
I agree. I have reservations as well. Without these protections, I wouldn't be voting for it either.
Yeah, without this in play, I mean, all these protections, I wouldn't be for it.
Yeah, we're right. We've all heard promises.
A lot, Missy.
But in this case, I think we've sufficiently protected the citizens and the city.
Well, and I respect my brothers on this. I really do, but, I mean, you know, I just can't go with you on it.
All right, well, let me give you my quick take on this being a local manufacturer. What this community needs, obviously, is manufacturing jobs. So, this company is targeted for our strategy of bringing the manufacturing industrial-based type jobs to this community. Now, this company approached the state of Virginia as a private company to obtain the grants they obtained prior to the city even having knowledge of this project well before we were engaged. And so, there were several grants that became available through the state interaction. Basically, the Virginia Economic Development Partnership presented the options to the company, and they pursued several of those options. One was the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund through the Governor's Office. That does come through taxpayer dollars. And then, the Tobacco Revitalization Commission, which I will say is not taxpayer dollars. That was a lawsuit settlement by the big tobacco companies that the state of Virginia took the windfall from, which was earmarked and put into a fund earmarked specifically for economic development in the tobacco region. So, those were monies won in a civil lawsuit. So, those are the two money pools in play. Anytime you get a grant like that, these entities, the EDP and the Tobacco Commission, have both made some pretty significant mistakes in the past. Poor contracts, providing grant money out there before performance is achieved, not getting performance achieved. So, in this case, they've learned from those lessons. So, these contracts, they have to achieve first before, you know, money is dispersed out. So, there's a lot tighter control on execution now than what they had in previous contracts. I will say that this company has had several meetings with this city, and they know. We've looked them in the eye multiple times, and we've asked not tough questions necessarily in an emotional standpoint, but very pointed questions about execution. And honestly, we had concerns. And we backed up and said we need a little bit more security on these grant dollars that's flowing out of the state because we were trying to be fiduciary responsible for state money. So, really, the city's playing this, is the state's issuing the money, but we're really just a conduit. They have to have a municipality take the money and then turn it over to the private entity, and then they have to have a municipality like us to verify the company is actually executing what they said they were going to execute. So, our role here is really the steward of that money. So, we're to make sure that American Merchant executes the jobs and the investment they said before the tobacco money and the state money goes to this company. So, where we would falter is if we allow that money to flow before we have done our due diligence to verify their execution. That's our responsibility now. So, we have then, because of some of the concerns, said the last thing we really need here to be fully above board is the city does not have the means, okay, to fund a falter of this company. You know, if they go into bankruptcy, or if they do anything where they do not pay these obligations, we are not in a position to pay that. So, to make sure we protect the city, we have to have a deed of trust on that private property. That's the only way we could protect the city going forward, to make sure we did have a means and cash and an asset available that could be liquidated in order to pay the obligations back that would be due. But there's also restrictions in here. If you read it, they're required to go out and get a surety bond. So, they're required to go out and get other things other than this deed of trust to make sure financial dollars are setting aside, to make sure that if anything goes wrong, that the money's there to repay. Now, what everybody has to understand, these grants, these companies are projecting jobs and investment in a future state. They're going forward. There's not a single company in this town or in this country knows exactly what the market's going to do in the next 30 days, 60 days, or a year. So, everything is a risk. Markets changed, commodity, consumer pricing changes, all that changes. We're going to do the very best we can as a city to support this company. This company can be successful here. We've pulled together, I think, the right team. We've got BBU involved because we were concerned with the waste treatment side. We made sure the company toured industrial sites here that had waste treatment. We made sure we had the experts involved, which is BBU, make sure their engineering side was hooked up with the company's engineering side, to make sure that was all done properly. So, in my opinion, if you were involved in the process, I think you would be convinced that we did every amount of due diligence that we felt was reasonable and we could do to make sure we were giving ourselves the best position to be safe, and we were giving the company the best position to be successful. So, now, with that said, our responsibility is to make sure we support them and we help them accomplish what they said they're going to accomplish. And we're going to be right there with them to make sure, and those folks know, I will be contacting them if they don't do that. I think they know us well enough now. So, that's a little different, I think, than what we've done in the past. What we've done in the past was not the way you do it. Now, we might learn from this experience, do some stuff a little different. Even now, we get better, but we're trying to do things better and right. So, I'm trying to explain it in those terms.
Let me say this, Mr. Mayor. Let me say, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
This is council comments.
I want to credit...
Council comments, Ms. Marnie. Council comments. Council comments.
I want to praise. I want to praise.
Let Mr. Flainer speak. Have the respect of a council person trying to make a comment. Then we'll come back to you.
And I want to say, I appreciate your city staff, all of you all, for what you've done in this, okay? I want to give you all the kudos. And I know BBU has been an integral part of this also. I mean, we have some good people, and it's no reflection, it actually has no reflection on these people from American Merchant. I don't know them. I'm just concerned, my own perception is, I'm concerned, and I want you to know that, Mr. Mayor. But I thank you, Mr. City Manager slash City Attorney, and your whole staff, Mr. Poe, whoever was involved in this. Thank you very much, and kudos to BBU. I'll say that much.
All right, Ms. Marnie, you want to come and make a comment again?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I will share with you some information I got from the Tobacco Commission in a phone call. I've called them more than one time. I have appeared before them, unknown to anybody but one other, two other people. I appeared before the entire commission. Now, that said, I think it would be interesting for you all to know, unless this has been changed within the last year, perhaps it has, perhaps it has not, they have no criteria for what determines their definition of economic development. I asked that question point blank. I said, do you mean to tell me that you all are out here giving away millions of dollars, and you don't even know what you're giving it for? And the answer was, well, economic development. I said, do you mean you have no criteria? You don't even know how to define what you are giving money to or for? I could walk in and say, economic development. We need $10 million. So, don't count on the tobacco money for definitive information on what constitutes economic development. Now, what this tells me is that when these projects fall on their face, or whatever they fall on, it may well be the bad judgment of the city officials who made the decision for what was economic development. You better think about this, people, because we've had this happen before in this community, and we didn't come out smelling like the sweetest rose. So, just remember, they don't define economic development. That's not what they do. They just give the money, and then you have to give it back. I don't know whether we give it back or not, but I know what I have been told. I share that with you.
Well, let me say this. The Tobacco Commission in the past has not been servants of the people, Ms. Marnie. And we've had people that have been on Tobacco Commission that had no business being on Tobacco Commission. They had about as much ability to do that as somebody you pick out on State Street walking up and down right about now, okay? But they were politicians. We've got better people now. We've got actually people that are learning on the Tobacco Commission. We actually do. And they have learned to protect monies a lot better. Used to, it was a party time. Your buddies got taken care of. That's how it worked. And people very unqualified were on the Tobacco Commission. I don't think that's the case as much now. Period.
I will say, I've dealt with the Tobacco Commission over the years, and I'd agree that they have tightened up partly through a process of learning, partly because they realize that the funds they have are eventually going to run dry. I mean, so they're being better stewards of their money and better accountability. And to that end, when you say what's economic development, they set out the metrics, and it's in the agreement, that it's in terms of capital investment and jobs. And those numbers are not arbitrary. They come from American Merchant. They're the ones that said, we're going to make this level of investment and jobs. So, that's what you hold them to, is what they said, and as they meet those thresholds, then you release the funds to them. And if they don't, as we've all mentioned, there are provisions that protect the city's interests should that money have to go back to the state.
Mr. Mayor, I will also add too that I don't know exactly what Ms. Marnie was referring to as far as the definition, but I do know that the Tobacco Commission and the COF both have about a 16-page application that deals, that asks for company financials, not only previous, but also projected, and also asks for definitions of the type of manufacturing and the type of jobs, and the, not only the type of jobs, but the amount of pay and the wages for each individual type of job. So, it's a pretty in-depth application that's required before they even move to the approval process.
I want to echo the mayor's comments in regards to American Merchant. I think it's important for the community to know that not only has American Merchant promised us a lot, but we have a responsibility as a city to help them meet those obligations. And if it's in regards to obtaining employees, if it's in regards to the processes that you all run into that are creating problems, I know myself, my staff, and this council is here. We want you to succeed, and we expect you to succeed. As the mayor said, we've had pointed conversations in the past. I'm a pretty much open book, and I think you all are as well. We appreciate you being here. We want you to succeed. We can do it together, and that's what we're going to do.
All right, with that said, any other council comments? Okay, I think I had a motion by Mr. Hubbard and a second by Mr. Wingard. So, clerk, call the roll.
Flainer?
No, let me say I wish you the best. I hope it works out, but I just have insecurities about this, concerns. And it's, I wish you gentlemen the best and everything else for this.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mum Power?
Yes. All right, on to the consent agenda with counsel's pleasure.
Move to accept the consent agenda as is.
Okay, again, a motion by Mr. Flainer to accept as...
I'll second.
As written, got a second by Mr. Hartley on the consent agenda. Please call. Please call the roll.
Flainer?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Matters presented by the public, non-agenda items, anyone? Ms. Marnie? Yeah, everybody else signed up for a specific number, you're the only one that says ALL.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie, I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner, I'm a taxpayer. I have a question. Is there now, or in the foreseeable future, meaning the next, let's say, four or five years, maybe longer, but we'll say four or five years, is there any connection to or partnership with, or any sort of relationship between the American Merchants, or whatever that company is we were just talking about, and VI College?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there any, any connection at all between the owners of either or both of that property, or the intended use, or any collaborative effort between Virginia Intermont College property and the American Merchant property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Not aware of any.
All right, with that said, no other comment?
Yeah, I actually did.
Okay.
I signed up on the wrong seat earlier.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Scott Campbell, non-resident, property owner, taxpayer, like yourself. I actually spoke to Mr. Reeves today before the meeting about my specific concern, but I just wanna, you know, ask a question on the record. What is the city's Treasury Department's policy on return to mail? About as simple as that. They have mail that is being returned to them, specifically my two tax bills from last year. I was informed that it's my fault because the deed had an incorrect address on it. However, the deed they handed me had the telephone number to my attorney, which could've cleared it up simply. I actually was also proactive and made a couple of phone calls to that office, which I found out December 29th, the mail was sitting in their drawer while I was talking to them on the phone back in June, so...
That's a trigger.
You know, Mr. Reeves is looking into this, and I appreciated him giving me time today, and he said he's gonna follow up with me about it, but, you know, my position on it is simple. The treasurer operates an office, and she's the chief executive in that office, and there's mail being returned to her that no further action's being taken, and her answer to me was because she is not required to. I think, based on everything I've heard here tonight, in the last several days, talking to some people, maybe everybody involved in the city government ought to take a little time to think about what they can do that they're not required to, that would maybe make things a little better, in the smoother day-to-day operation of things. Again, like I said, it was just a question, I wanted on the record, I have full faith in Mr. Reeves' ability to handle the issue as far as the way I see it, but it's, I've discovered, it's kinda difficult to get an answer to a question like this, and I think for the citizens of your community, it should be a much more streamlined and easy process for them to find that answer.
Well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. I will tell you that Mr. Reeves will check into it. Our objective is to improve our customer service to the community, 'cause you're not the first that's had complaints of some kind, and we want good customer service, so we'll get back to you.
Right.
You understand that, Mr. Campbell, do you not, sir, though, that that is a constitutional office, which is separate and distinct from city government. We're, we do city government here, they have a separate entity. The city treasurer, for all of the issues, has been elected, I think, two or three times. I just want you to understand that. So we don't have, am I wrong, Mr. City Attorney, we don't have a lot of control over that? I mean, we can look into it, but we have no control.
We'll only request and hope she will comply with it, but we don't, we can't tell her what to do.
I mean, it's an executive branch, and it's her office to run.
I mean, that's the only thing.
But it's not part of the city, we're not allowed, we can't tell her what to do, we can't tell her how to do her job, we can only complain about it, and she's minimal, so, I mean, we'll certainly try, try to solve that issue.
Yeah, there's three constitutional officers in the city, sheriff, the treasurer, commissioner of revenue.
Four.
I'm sorry.
Circuit court clerk.
Circuit court clerk. Those four...
Five. Good God, that's the biggest employer in the city.
Is there another one, is there a sixth one?
There's, you know, he's at Commonwealth Attorney's.
Anyway, those constitutional officers are elected as constitutional officers, just like this council, so they do not directly report to the city manager as a functional day-to-day execution of the office that they hold, so he can check with them, we're trying to get a team environment going here, obviously, so commissioners of revenue and treasurer and sheriff, we're trying to work together, so he'll reach out, make sure they understand the complaint, and see what we can do to help resolve it.
Great, yeah, and again, everybody I've spoken to this week, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll call the Bristol, Virginia City Council, January 9th meeting, adjourned.[1765.26][1765.26][music]